Welcome to the Tree County Board of Supervisors meeting on Wednesday, July 17th. Supervisor Brown is on his way. He'll be here any moment. Supervisor Chadwick will join us later by phone. With that, Supervisor Groves, will you lead us in collective allegiance?
Please join me.
All right. Moving on to public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must be pertaining to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department or follow up or schedule the matter as a subsequent board agenda item. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment?
Member Harvey Weaver-Bell. Oh, so many meetings back, not so many meetings. Supervisor Groves talked about possible interesting attacks that help fund public safety. I think you mentioned that you were driving back from somewhere and listening to the radio about crimes in Trinity County. So I think that's a great idea, voluntary to help if I can. On the other hand, cannabis, I don't see anything about taxation there yet. It seems to me as though that's something that ought to be looked at. There's seeds, but no taxation. It'd be great if we could actually see what's going on in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Cannabis taxation either has not fallen off our radar. Technicalities that have been looked at and need to continue to be looked at, so.
Hello, Chairman Manasseh at Haightport. Thanks to you all for your work. I have a little bit of talk about the taxation. It keeps hearing a lot about where's the taxes. People don't realize that the taxes is charged on, it's a resale, there's a sales tax. And until we have retail sales, there's no sales tax. So that's where, why we're not getting taxes. The other question I had is, are you pursuing the part of the tax we get from the cultivation tax that the state takes? Because we do have cannabis operations, we should be entitled to our part of that pie that the state is collecting. I don't know if we have to have resale happening for that or just cannabis operations in general. But as far as where the tax money comes, it's on the resale. And until we have resale, retail, no tax money. Thank you.
My name is General Stull. I'm at Haightport, California. I'd like to read here a couple paragraphs out of the California State Constitution. Valid major application, section 7.5. A city or county major performed by the legislative body of a city charter, city county, or charter county, as submitted to the voters for approval, may not do either of the following. Include or exclude any part of the city charter, city county, or charter county from the application or the effect of provisions based upon approval or disapproval of a city or county major, or based upon casting a percentage of votes in favor of the major by the elected of the city charter, city county, or any part thereof. Section 11, LM8, legislature may not delegate to private persons or body power to make, control, appropriate, supervise, or interfere with county municipal corporations or improvements, money, or property, or to levy taxes or assessments, or perform municipal functions. That's out of the California State Constitution. Out of Article 13D, assessment and property-related fee reform. Application, notwithstanding any other provisions of law, the provisions of this article shall apply to all assessments, fees, and charges, whether imposed pursuant to the state statute or local government charter authority. Nothing in this article or Article 13C shall be construed to provide a new authority of agencies providing tax assessment fee or charge, affect the existing laws relating to the imposition of fees and charges as a condition of property development, affect existing laws relating to improper position of temporary yield tax, new session, definition of base funded agency based in government, is applying to section B, section 1 of Article 13C. Assessment means any levy or charge upon real property by an agency for the special benefit conferred upon the real property assessment include, but not limited to, special assessment, benefit assessment, maintenance assessment, and special assessment tax. I think that's what you're calling the hospital tax, the special assessment tax.
Okay, given your three minutes.
Is it up?
Yes. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. Chief Crossman, Chris Haightport. I think it's funny that Supervisor Groves kind of nodded over to me earlier and gave me the nice tie, good looking. I don't think anything's funny about me wearing a suit today. Okay, I guess the common denominator here is two. Right? This is the second season that Olivia and I have dealt with law enforcement and dealt with being accused of not following the rules of Trinity County growing. We have two kids that are affected by this. Okay? We just spent five hours doing a booking and release, walking with my partner and the mother of my children into Trinity County Jail to go get put in a detox room. Innocent until proven guilty? Okay? The only people aren't getting affected by this are the people that stood here for the last three years, sat on this board, sat in the planning department, and said, "Trust us. Oh, you don't need your permit printed. It's cool. You're in the program. Don't worry, we'll stand up to law enforcement for you guys. We'll take care of all this for you guys. Just trust us." You know, for years, we've been licensed. Our first license, I think we only actually had in our hand for maybe a month of it being active. Our second license, maybe two months. You know, there's all these issues for years and years now that have come before this board and I've watched happen. And everybody gets all wrapped up about the painless of this. And I'm hearing people talk about taxing cannabis companies. I've been taxed, been robbed, and it's all by this county. Okay? I'm dressed in a suit because we're going to court for the second time today. You can only plead guilty or not guilty, but somewhere there has to be an obviously not guilty. There hasn't been anybody that stood up here and stood up for the growers and said, "This is insanity. This is crazy." You know, there's growers, there have licensed growers that got raided in the past year that took plea agreements just to stay in the licensing process. That's even crazier. That's like being in an abusive relationship and telling the cop, "No, it's cool. Let me go home to my husband. It's cool. Let me get beaten some more." So while you guys are dealing with all these issues that people are talking about, and trust me, I know that some of the things people stand up here and say are crazy. I want you guys to think about us having to go and get a babysitter to watch our kids for five hours while we go sit in Trinity County Jail for a booking and release. I want you guys to think about us getting a babysitter for the week that I have with my family because they're not staying in Trinity County, because they do not feel comfortable in a place that the Board of Supervisors cannot work with law enforcement in a way that is going to keep licensed business owners from having guns put in their face and come down their driveway, going to keep people protecting the families of the business owners in this town. So when you guys are here governing and dealing with this, please think about the fact that what you guys do in this room or don't do outside of this room for the promises you have made directly affect the people of your community every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, former members. I'm Ed Presley, I'm the OES manager for the county. And I just wanted to announce that hopefully everybody got the test phone calls this morning. The COVID was tested countywide for the first time. We had about 5,100 test calls go out. I'll be receiving statistics and switching analysis from OnSol this afternoon as they compile all the data to find out how well our switching system worked here in Trinity County, because that was one of our primary concerns. But for all events and purposes, intensive purposes, everything seems to have gone off well. I didn't know if you had any comments or suggestions or had received any feedback. Hopefully you got your phone calls. You didn't get your phone call?
I got mine.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Are you okay?
Yeah, I saw that.
No, I didn't get a phone call. That's okay. I'm right behind you. Sorry. I didn't get a phone call. I did go online. I did open the app and check it, though.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be looking into all the different phone calls and the different suggestions and everything. We'll be getting information today and compiling some statistics so I can pass to the board and give you some further information. I also wanted to leave some COVID flyers in the bag for anybody that would like to sign up.
Perfect. Thank you, Ed, and thank you for doing that.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Tom Blanko, W C. Picture is worth a thousand words. I hope a demonstration is worth a thousand pictures. Since I have a fairly complex concept to discuss, largely environmental law. If you just ask anybody who doesn't really work in it what that means, they probably think about dragonflies and fish and stuff. But what it really is, is deadlines and procedures and specific cut-up points in timeline. Like so many things, I learned most of what I currently am practicing in environmental law by mistake. So, as a demonstration, I got into my latest round of environmental law in 2007 when I was asked to intervene on the relicensing of the uranium mine, subject to an EA, which is the federal equivalent of our mitigated net gain. And so there was an EA, it was about this thick, and I was able to challenge it. Came up, not just me, a group of lawyers and I, came up with 19 independent contentions, all admitted the Nuclear Regulatory Commission hadn't had this experience where nobody challenged the relicensing of a mine. They're used to challenges against nuclear power plants. So they kind of invented the procedures as they went along. Well, two years later, they published in the Federal Register what they call a generic EIS. And I saw that it went out. I happened to be on a rock and roll tour at the time. I didn't pay a lot of attention to it. I threw a couple of comments in there. I was in no position to do a NEPA lawsuit at the time. Anyway, that GEIS became law. So then, the following year, a couple new mines opened up, also with environmental assessments. And so, like any good lawyer, I copied what I had already done and challenged each one of those. Only then did I realize that you can't challenge all those, because they tiered to this GEIS. So all I could challenge was the little bit that was not already covered by that generic EIS that is iron plaid now, because the time to challenge it has passed. Same thing is true with cannabis. The state has given us a programmatic EIR. The time to challenge it is passed. Everything that it says is solid, where our EIR in draft form is loose paper. Where they conflict, everything is subject to challenge. So I know my time's up. I encourage us to insist that the EIR tier to the iron plaid document that the state gives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Anyone want to follow that?
Of course, JB does.
Oh, would you have a quick comment?
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. John Brower from Jackson City. Almost on the same subject as Tom is the Governor's Trailer Bill that has passed. I don't know how familiar you may be with it, but it does a couple really important things, the most important of which is that it recognizes that this transition process that our state is in, the old ways of doing cannabis to the new, is in process and is taking more time and is a larger chore than maybe anybody really realized. But it gives local counties and cities that are offering commercial permitting opportunities two more years to complete their local SEQA documents and certify them. This is really important here for us, because the current draft of the current document can probably use a little work. And we certainly don't want to see it take all of these two years. It would be great to have something in place this coming winter prior to next spring's licensing push. The middle of what is now the compliance season is not the best time to be changing these things, but strongly encourage you to take a good look at the draft EIR and familiarize yourselves with it, because it's going to be coming before you soon. And it's definitely got some issues that we hope will be sent back for a thorough rewrite. But that being said, the other important thing in Governor's Trailer Bill is the extension of provisional licensing. And there's some other good things in there for us, too. But it has passed and it helps give us the time that we need to really do this right. So, thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else for public comment? All right. Welcome Supervisor Brown.
Sorry, I was late.
No worries. I mean this in a good way. You don't look wrong.
I'm concerned.
It's like I'm concerned. All right, moving on to our presentation, 1.1. Receive our presentation from Richard Gonzalez. With Clifton Larson and Allen, and approved the comprehensive annual financial report, caper, single audit report, and management report for the period ended June 30th, 2018, no fiscal impact. Good morning, Richard, and welcome back. And Angie, of course.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Angie Bittle, Auditor Controller. I would like to introduce you to Rich Gonzalez, who is our external auditor from CLA. He will be going over our 2017 annual comprehensive financial report, the single audit, and the management report. With that, I'll let Rich take it over.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm glad I made it, because I was getting stuck in construction again. I'm here to present the financial statements for the county of Trinity for the year-end of January 2018. You know, people ask, "What's the purpose of an audit?" And really, the hard response is, it's really just to provide reasonable assurance that the statements are not clearly stated. The key word there is reasonable assurance. We cannot provide absolute assurance, because I would, we would probably be here all year looking at every single transaction and get sick of this, but we issue, we express an opinion providing an reasonable assurance that the statements are not clearly stated. So that said, we issued a clean opinion on the county's caper, which is an unmodified opinion. That's what you want. That means we have no clear statements, no, or no concern that the material statements that were not caught during our audit. We felt the audit went very smoothly, as usual, the county is well-prepared. You know, a lot of people think the audit's just, you know, it's coming November for a week, and we look at some voices, and we go home, and that's it. Well, the audit process actually begins as early as last month. And it's just a long process, and it requires a lot of effort from the county. And we're very happy to work with Trinity and all the departments, special audit controllers, because by the time we arrive to do, do the work, everything is pretty much organized and ready to go. The other report I want to go over is the Civil Audit Report. And that's basically an audit of all the federal expenditures administered by the county. We get a schedule of expenditures for the year, and then from there, we select major programs based on the dollar amount at risk. During our audit last year, we had no findings at all, compliance or financial. So, again, a clean opinion on compliance. Finally, I want to present the management report. And we did have a couple recommendations on management. Now, these aren't considered significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. It's a sense of our communication, you know, based on our alterations during the audit. One recommendation is to, is to develop a plan to address a hospital deficit. And when the hospital was transferred a few years ago, it left a $400,000 deficit in the county treasury. Nothing's really happened since then, so we just recommend that someone take a look at that and develop a plan to start paying that down. Our other recommendation is more than a county recommendation. The other controller's office developed a fund to basically track all the government-wide adjustments for the financial statements. That includes capital assets, lump sum debt, things of that nature. And there was a couple accounts that were out of balance. We just recommend at year-end, like the county closes, just to, you know, reconcile those balances, just to make sure that those balances do agree at the works sheets. Again, we didn't think that was going to show weakness, because we had no findings when we reviewed the work sheets, like, viewed the accounts. We just wanted to see that account thing up before we obtained analysis. And then the one highlight this year, another pretty flat year, was there's a new standard that's implemented, GAAP 75. It's a new OPEB standard. So people ask, "Well, what's the difference? We already have reported on our books." So the old standard, basically, is reporting a portion of that OPEB, and it's being advertised for 30 years. So every year would grow, but it was nowhere near what the true balance was. The new standard for the OPEB is basically reporting a higher balance on the county's financial statements. Somewhere similar mention. And that impacted the deposition of the county by about $35 million. So it's a big number. And with that in perspective, I believe that pension liability of the county is about $90 million, is that correct? Generally, OPEB is about, yes, they give $66 million. And that's why the county has this, is because of those two balances. And that's pretty common across all of Florida.
And we were expecting to see that.
Right. Okay. Okay, so any questions regarding the audit or this report?
Questions, anyone? Members of the public on this item? No questions? Anything else you'd like to further add to it?
Yeah, I think the audit went well. Developed a new portal, which is supposed to be a smoother run. Mike was in charge of it last year, as you know, he's no longer in my office, retired, so I'll be in charge of the portal this year.
All right. Good work, you guys. Thank you.
I'll move to through the caper report. Does it give a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Seeing none, so moved. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by a one-rule call motion. A member of the board staff will publicly request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members.
2.8.
Okay. I know this is going to sound strange, I want to pull 2.6. All right, any members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the calendar.
So may I accept the consent agenda as presented?
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, item 2.6. Authorize the chairman to sign a letter to Senator Bob Archuleta supporting SB 395 regarding harvesting wildlife. No fiscal impact. I didn't have time to check, but it appears that this is already, it's delivered and signed, this legislation, or am I wrong? And that this letter would be?
I don't know that. If you want me to do it in a moment, I would like to look at that.
Can we do that, and then we'll go back? Okay, we'll trailer 2.6, and go into 2.7. Find no objections to the issuance of a daily alcohol beverage license to the Trinity County of Trinity Lakes Lions Club of Trinity Center to serve alcoholic beverages at their karaoke singing to be held at the I U Fall? Did I say that right?
I U Fall.
In Trinity Center on August 10th, 2019. No fiscal impact.
Madam Chair, I'm going to cue this off this item.
All right, thank you. Any questions on this from board members, members of the public? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to the room. Present it.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so moved. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, John.
Anybody to arrest me? I took advantage of the situation.
Moving on to 2.8. Waive the competitive bid process and improve in agreement with Heart Intercity Inc. to provide Trinity County voting tabulation system and annual maintenance. $160,691.60 from the quarter recorder assessor budget and grant funding. Thank you, you pulled this one.
I did. I just have a quick question. I apologize, I didn't look at you previously. We say we're waiving the bid, but in the backup, there is a bid.
Well, I was waiting to bid the RFP process, actually going out to bid. I did receive quotes from Dominion and Heart, and felt that Heart was a better system for our size of a county.
Okay, so I guess I just don't know the difference between a quote and a bid?
I can answer that. The RFP process is a formal process, where we put out to the poll what should be provided responses. And this situation, based on the fact that there were no companies that, besides what we had received bids from, we didn't, we were asking to waive it. However, we still reached out to those two companies, able to provide that service and asked them to provide information to the county about what services they can provide to that to render decision. We waived the RFP process, which is the public posting that opens it up to public and has timelines and extensive additional work that needs to be done. So we just did it more formally.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
I have a quick question. Can you give us a sense of idea of how it was a better bid for us?
Well, the Dominion brought up, their equipment was just huge, like, our pole boxes would take up
Like our pole boxes would take up four, pulling places for like big carts, four by three or something. And so bigger counties who have moving companies actually come in and haul that equipment to them. That was one of the pitches. Their equipment was smaller and just fit better for our county.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
And the cost.
Right, and partly the cost. Any questions from the public? Comments? All right, seeing none. We will bring this back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'm moved to accept. Point is written.
Second.
Okay, John is... All right. All right, so with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so moved. Thank you, Dave. Bye-bye. Okay, consent agenda is finished.
If you want to answer.
Oh, yes, you're right, thank you.
Do you want to recall that?
I will recall two point six, which is the wildlife letter.
Thank you. I looked up the legislative history on this. It appears that on July 3rd, 2019, it was read through a second time, but at that time it was amended, which meant it has been re-referred to the committee on AETR.
Okay.
So it is still an asset.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Wasn't sure. Okay, so we have this.
Harvesting wildlife.
Did we have a public...
We have not.
Do you understand the harvesting wildlife that's been...
Killed.
Right, okay.
Killed, yeah.
Dare I say roadkill?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Nobody from the advisory board is here to represent, which is unfortunate because it is what it is. They did not have a meeting at the la, this last week because there was not a form, so they were not able to discuss this again. I did bring to their attention that it had been heavily revised, but it still kind of had the spirit of what was requested. I'm not ecstatic because roadkill needs to be taken care of. You do whatever you want with it, but to have to get an app and track it and...
How?
Oh, wait. Yeah, it's, they also want to know how many deer are killed, what's going on, and what it's used for, and all this other kind of stuff. So I, it's, it's the advisory board would like the board of supervisors in the county to move this forward.
All righty. Any comments from the public?
Thank you.
Does this count for cows that get hit on the side of the road too? Cows are classified as wildlife.
Yeah, and John, I believe that a cow is owned by an individual and...
Right, okay.
You will have to pay for that cow that you hit most likely.
Because I remember when I was a little kid, following the trail down the road to the guy's house that ran over a cow.
Okay. Put that in the record.
All right, seeing none. Any more comments, we'll bring back to the board for...
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Third. I just have one question of John.
Yes, sir.
So they still support or they feel the letter as is, given the changes?
They were not able to have a meeting.
Right.
There was not a form last week, so as far as I know, it is presented, it's on the table, this is it. If they don't, they'll, they need a meeting. Well, I have my own opinion on what they need to do, but they're working through it.
So if they have a later...
They won't be having another meeting for two months.
So probably a...
The data reporting is in May, not this show.
Oh, okay. May, that's... Thank you.
All right, I'm done.
All right, so all in favor, let's support the letter.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so moved.
You're invited over, everybody's invited over.
For dinner.
If I have a successful write-down...
Yeah.
All right, moving on to county matters. No, I'm sorry. Moving on to reports. Reports from department heads.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, Chair.
Tim Saxon, Sheriff. Just a quick update on some of the things going on within our department. The Spillman Project is up and running, doing very well. Majority of the staff's feeling very comfortable with it. Several of our deputies are very well versed in where their happy it's cutting down on the time that they're taking to complete reports and get them through the brutal process. We recently got a presentation about some electronic banking software that we're going to be implementing through our jail management system as well as our commissary and phone system for the inmate services. This is going to significantly reduce the time spent by staff to reconcile those reports that are currently being done by hand. And we're also going to save a little money on that. We are in the process of testing for deputy ones slash two. We had several applicants for that, so we're contacting them. We've completed testing for correctional deputy ones. We're in backgrounds of four individuals at this time. Our plan is to hire two if one ain't clear at this point, and then two again in January to get them through the process. We're moving forward with a pilot program with enterprise leasing to outfit patrol vehicles for us. So we're going through the process for four vehicles, moving forward on that. Contracts have been viewed by county council and approved. We're just getting the numbers together now, going back to CIO to work on that deal. And I recently was able to slip by agreement with the highway patrol with regard to purchasing some of their runout vehicles. We're looking at getting three expeditions and one F-250 pickup truck at a cost of about $900 a piece. They're going to require a little bit of maintenance, but we will put them out into our Trinity County Auxiliary and SAR program.
Okay.
So they're high-mileage vehicles, but they still have some life in them. The amount of usage that those two entities put on the car, we should be able to keep them going for six or seven years. And if we need to, we can go back and there's some others.
Thanks.
Highway control's been very, very helpful, working with the sonic program. That concludes my report. Any questions right now?
Go ahead.
So Sheriff, you heard, good morning, you heard testimony today, and I don't want you to have to get into, during public comment, I don't want you to get into anything like that. Obviously, you can't discuss the case, but it would be... I'd like to make sure that you and county council are talking about these situations as they come up and people can suppress as much as possible what's happening with our licensed people.
Absolutely.
And Sheriff, you probably have already received calls on this, but next time you talk to CHP, I think this falls under jurisdiction. We had this trailer on Highway 3 Sound.
I just never would be mad if I would fill on this yesterday. We discussed that, there's some things that we're going to be looking at. And through county council and through the CIO's office, we'll come back with something in the near future to try and solve that particular issue. But it's an ongoing problem, and it's not only here, it's happening throughout the state.
Oh, sure.
We're also, we're also taking a look at, from the CSSA standpoint, County Sheriff's Association, any legislation that modifies the impact on the storage of vehicles when they're determined to be either abandoned or a hazard. So we're tracking that as well.
Thank you. And funny you should mention enterprise. I just got back from a conference and heard about your enterprise program that you're looking into. Sounds like a great program. Other counties are using them, not just for the sheriff department, but other fleet management issues. So it sounds like, it sounds like a good deal.
As long as the numbers match up.
Exactly, right. Any other questions?
I was just curious about the, what's piloting, about the pilot program.
A lot of the, a lot of counties around the state are moving to completely replace their motor pool systems with leased vehicles. We're not in a position in Trinity County to do that right now because of the initial costs. So in conjunction with CIO's office, we received permission to go ahead and do a pilot program for five vehicles. So we're going to see how it works. We're hoping in the long run it saves us money on the upfront cost of capital outlay for the vehicle itself, plus the time that it takes to outfit the vehicles. Oftentimes, when you purchase a vehicle, it needs to be six to eight to 10 months before we can actually get it outfitted and put it into use as a police vehicle. With this system here, we don't start hanging on it until the vehicle's delivered to us and we're ready to get out.
Cool. Thank you.
And the timeframe's much shorter.
Timeframe's much shorter, instead of, we're looking at six to eight weeks of time that we tell them, this is what we want. They purchase it directly from the manufacturer, so we're not going through dealerships with any type of markups.
So we're going to use their purchasing power. They purchase over $2 million vehicles a year, so we can use their purchasing power. So they have a little more influence on getting the product out to the customer.
That's great.
It was, I appreciate the sheriff bringing that to us, and I think it was a great idea, and I hope it's expanded. So this being successful, we're going to do it again. Regarding the highway on, the vehicle on Highway 3, there's been a lot of chatter about legislation that's been passed that I can't find anything to do about. So keep that in mind when you look at it as far as transient, transient housing and whether people can stay in their vehicles during that time. And tell people not to talk, start rumors. Good luck.
You want me to...
Oh, yeah, you're carrying the gun.
If we had a word in this.
Not a problem, you're talking to the right person right over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other... Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else?
I was going to jump in and ask if I could introduce our new planning director. This is Kim Hunter, who started last Monday, so she's been here almost a week, so she's done more than the last week and a half. And I think she anticipated, she did an amazing job, I just wanted to introduce Kim Hunter as our new planning director. We noticed that Rick is not in the audience for the first time, it doesn't have to be. So he's very pleased to...
Good. Well, welcome, Kim. We're really thrilled to have you.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here. It's been a warm welcome, and yeah, it has been a very busy week and a half and exciting, lots to do.
I bet.
So this morning, I do want to give you some current numbers on cultivation permits issued and pending. We have 292 G permits and 100 pending applications. Those are renewals and new applications. Sorry, I don't have a very young speech of those, but gives you a good, yeah, photograph. And I'd be happy to tell you about myself. Any information you'd like to have at this time, or I'll just keep it brief.
I'd love to hear the reader's interest.
Yes.
Is it more than the journal put out?
Oh, was that in labor this morning?
Go ahead, give us a...
Probably not. Yeah, I have to get on the third right schedule. Did it is Paper Day today? Okay.
Good to know.
She knows who to look at.
Yeah, just professional background is, I actually started out, I do have a degree in planning and resource management and a professional certificate from UC Davis. My career basically started out though in watershed management. I was a watershed coordinator in western Nevada, eastern Sierra, Alpe de Mono, and Carson Valley, Nevada, and then moved up to the Altairis, eastern Shasta area, northeastern corner, over on the other side of 299. I was a watershed coordinator for three districts over in that area. Eventually, grants started drying up, and I ended up as an associate planner of the Modoc County Planning Department. Was in that position for a little, less than two years before I was promoted to director. And then took a short stint, went to Modoc County's senior planner for a little bit, then back up to Modoc. I miss working in the rural environment. Honestly, I loved people of Modoc, but I did not care for living in Altairis. So I did community progress that way for two years to Modoc County. We'd outside and we'd get home. It was great. I miss, I miss those people, I miss the community, just didn't want to be back there. Very cool, very nice. And, and so then from there, went to Shasta County for two years, planning manager. That was a fantastic experience. I actually worked with Richard for a short time on the housing element when that came due. And so then, here I am, after two years, wanting to return to the rural county environment. I'm sorry, I've got cannabis aspect of this, and there you have it.
And she's also local now. She has a house in Escrow, so she'll be moving here rather than to meet you.
It would just be great.
Yes, at the end of summer. Yeah, you know, one last reason to, you know, know that I made the right decision.
Well, again, we're thrilled. We're looking forward to what you're gonna, your experience will help with.
Right?
The general plan, we forgot about it.
Oh, the general plan. Yes.
Is that still around?
Is that still...
Is that still around?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, that is, that's another super exciting thing that I'm really looking forward to in a terrified kind of way as well, because it's a huge undertaking, is that, yeah, updating the general plan that's needed. And we're looking at having RFQ out on the street by the end of August. I like to say sooner, but the way this week and a half has gone and as much as I'm played, don't want to be too optimistic, but August is the target. And we'll come to, if we get that out as soon, we'll come to, we'll get that out as soon as possible, keep you updated. Very important and much needed. So I'm really looking forward to, I have updated different portions of general plans in different counties, but never the whole document, so it's something that I'm, by the end, looking forward to.
You just made supervisor gross day. Oliver, a day, you're really supervisor gross.
Wonderful. Oliver, you nailed it.
See, in one week, she's accomplished what we've been trying to do for 30 years.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you again, Kim. Any other department heads? Okay, CIO.
That was my report. I'll introduce...
Yeah.
Just to figure out, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. I think she has to bring the Trinity County.
All right. Reports from supervisors. Supervisor Brooks.
No out-of-county travel, that won't be reported to you.
All right.
Does that make any sense?
No. Well, I'll go with it.
No out-of-county travel, but I do have some requests for staff.
An APN is pretty, pretty messy, and it's been messy for decades, and I'd like, like it to be cited unfortunately, but that's not my choice, that is our staff's choice. It's APN 019-550-1900. The owner is Trinity County. And also, right before Forest Road 1 and 12, it would be on, I believe it's Trinity Pines Road, there is a humongous pile of garbage. I can send you a picture. And there's two vehicles that have been sitting there for a few years. Now, moving on to vehicle abatement. I would like, at least for myself, to receive a report on the vehicle, the vehicles that have been abated, abated, the number of quests we have to have vehicles abated. And I understand we have limited revenue to abate those vehicles, but I still would like to know what's going on with those. It just seems like they keep piling up no matter what, and I get a lot of calls about them, and I tell people to call right just before the new budget hits and to use up the money where they want to use it fast, District 5, usually. Also, I'd really like to give direction to staff to come up with some magic revenue stream. I don't think that we will continue to be able to offer the minimum amount of services that we're required to by the state. And I think that our first priority, and your first priority, Richard, should be bringing up a new rub, new stream, whether it's taxation of cannabis, sales tax for sheriff. You need to start presenting this stuff to us, and we need to start listening in an open session instead of ad hoc committee. open session instead of ad hoc committees or anything else. Thank you.
Supervisor Brad?
You're reporting on, do you see it next meeting or?
No, federal lands part of the...
Okay. Well, I have nothing else. No, I'm sure.
All right. Do you have something back on board report?
Yes, I forgot to mention something in maybe a request. My understanding is that the federal government has cut the, our power allotment to T-Pod by 16 and 1/2% for future moving forward. This is based on the rod flows and going back and how they figure it. But, Chair, maybe you could at some point get T-Pod to give us a update on the power allotments, and there'll be one more serious drop in five years. So see where we're going and where the county stands, and we all understand that.
All right, well, get a date scheduled. Thank you. Out-of-county travel, just got back in from Naco. Don't have all my notes, but we had a great presentation from the Chief Forest Service to our public lands committee, some of the things they've been doing, some of their processes. They've been doing what every organization should be doing, is analyzing their process. She wanted to ensure us that the environmental process of NIPA is not going away, but just their internal process of processing those documents, which take forever, as we all know, has been shortened, as with BLM. BLM claims that used to take a year. Now they're trying to get stuff back out in 30 days. There was a lot of talk from public lands committee members about certainly increased budget authorities, of course, that's not up to her, for more personnel, as we all have experienced, especially in the collaborative. We find that there's just not enough personnel throughout the Forest Service in particular to get some of the work, much needed work done. Also, in our federal lobbyist update, cannabis banking is really moving forward at the federal level, so we'll see if that really starts to happen by the end of the year. I'll have some more updates at the next meeting as well. And, Richard, along with the vehicle abatement list, maybe you could just send the whole board that list. And then, I don't know, I had asked you if you have any other dates on when the EIR will be before our board. I just kind of want to make sure the board had something at least penciled in under schedule.
Okay, yeah, I'll get an update, because I know we've had, has anticipated a lot of responses. So staff, I'll take time to go through that, so I'll get them to, kind of give me an idea of how long they think it's going to be. I do think it'll be pushed back a little bit because of not a response. I want to make sure we review everything and make sure it's established properly. So I'll get staff to give us an update. And if we're done, I might respond to a supervisor's ability. It takes me a minute to process sometimes an answer.
Sure. Obviously, last I heard, planning commission may be late August, I was going to say late April, no, late August, with the board mid to late September, but those dates certainly can change, given what you just said. Okay, I think that's it for me. Did you want to?
Yeah. Responding to your question about revenues, we are during the budget process doing that, and we are looking for the revenues. So I can either give you an update prior or during Craig's presentation. He was going to go ahead and just list out all potential revenues that the county could seek in different manners, whether it be in tax or fees or whatever. So I don't know if you want it sooner than that, or if you want that incorporated into his overall presentation to become clearly, September? Yeah, or September. It would kind of bring the whole picture together.
I understand that. If you want to start giving us tidbits before then, I would really appreciate it, because sitting down with Craig there and the whole picture and looking at what you have to present, it's up to you. How do you feel about that?
Well, if she does it during his presentation, it'll really have the numbers of what our general fund is, what the ask is, and what the potential revenues would be to kind of pull it together. So, but it is a pleasure with board if you like.
Will you have anything in place to offer as moving forward for additional revenue? Or will it be something that's going to lie in front of us and we'll just bicker over for the next few years?
Will there be recommendations, the recommendations of the board, the direct staff, to move forward on the different ideas that we have to generate these revenues?
Have you done that yet? Or have you received that recommendation yet?
From the board?
Yes.
No, I haven't. But it hasn't been discussed, no discussion yet either. So that's something we want to put on the agenda for discussion, I mean, we're happy to work on that.
Yep.
Okay, so if we want to move that to the sixth or the 19th or...
The sixth.
I could bring some ideas that we're working on. I won't have the exact numbers, but I can bring anything.
Numbers aren't, that's fine. The numbers, we'll end up with Craig then.
Will you have, is this, does that make sense? I don't know what you guys are doing in your budget committee.
We're just identifying potential revenue, so I can bring the sources, but not necessarily the numbers, but bring the sources that we're looking at, that would potentially increase revenues for the county, which would enable us to complete our mandated services in a more efficient manner.
All mandated services or the minimum that we're offering now?
The goal is all, but we like to do, we would like to start doing what we're supposed to do, do well, and then experiment out whether doing a bunch of things, not so well. But I have...
Then you might also want to look at where you want to focus on doing those things well, and what can be set aside for a moment.
Okay.
So what you just said is fantastic.
What I was trying to do is identify some sources, but not necessarily numbers. I'm going to invite them to, so if the board would like it on the sixth, we can do that on the sixth. I'll look to the chair and see what they do it like.
Does that give you enough time? I guess that does, because we have an extra week.
Yeah, and Craig is back next week, so I can say...
Okay. If that works, it's up to you, because I don't know what you guys are...
Okay.
Will he join us in that?
Would you hear? Probably not.
Okay.
I heard it. It's up to you.
No, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, moving on to the ad hoc committee's commercial cannabis ordinance amendments. Still, as we continue to say, we are kind of in a holding pattern until we see the EIR. And Susie, I noticed we combined at the beginning of the year, just ad hoc, and we included legislation in it, so sometimes it lists it and sometimes it doesn't. Yeah, so could you double check that? Our member of the public did mention the trailer bill. I have not had time to go through what it all allows for counties, but there certainly is some much larger, lengthier extensions for counties to get their work, sequel work done. But I think that's it. Anything else?
Nothing going on until the EIR is done.
Right. Okay, federal lands legislation.
All right, so I didn't do that to Jeremy on the trip, I swear to God. So Jeremy and I took a whirlwind trip back to Washington DC. Congressman Huffman was very generous with his time. He met with us over an hour on Tuesday, I think, a little, in the afternoon, where we had a, what I'd describe as a professional and orderly meeting. And we went over the issues that, some of the issues that have come out. I believe he's agreed to come to Trinity County and meet in front of the board. And that will be depending on his schedule, but soon. He wants to make sure people in Trinity County understand what his bill entails, and if it doesn't. So I think it's important for everybody that has an opinion one way or the other to be involved in that, and they should be there with his whole staff to answer questions and answer questions that we have. Then the next day, I gave a brief testimony to the committee, which unfortunately was three people and two people. It was very short. But I will say, all the other wildernesses that were in front of us, a lot of the problems and issues are the same. It kind of rings as people complain on both sides that it's the same issues that we have. And I found out that in Texas, pine trees were a gift from God to the state of Texas. So they should need to be cut because God sent them. Jeremy, do you have anything to add?
The only key takeaways I have, more or less quotes that Congressman Huffman said was, he is open to new trails in the new wilderness areas. He was open to federal county lane land exchange, and one of the things he sourced as a holdback factor in salvage logging was that the mill is at its full capacity. So I don't think we've been able to check that fact yet, but those are some of the key things I heard.
I've had some discussions on the mills, and for, yes, this year, the mill, our local mill is full, but the mill is working hard and other mills to be able to bring in a lot of outside salvage log next year.
Yeah, another thing, the visitor center, we had a chance to talk about that. It seems like there is, I thought there's a large opportunity to kind of design and curtail a visitor center that would best utilize tourism, economic expansion for us. It seemed like maybe something more like the Whiskey Town Visitor Center, educational, with a potential emphasis on ADA access that could set us aside from other places and make us a destination area. So I thought the meeting went very well, and I feel like you did a great job standing up for your concerns.
I will add that the Forest Service, let's see, the BLM, now the Department of Interior had given notes that they weren't very happy about the visitor center because they have $11 billion in back maintenance, and so they weren't terribly interested in building new facilities. Congressman Huffman questioned them aggressively on that. And the Forest Service explained that part of his bill on the fire, fire plans is not how they do business. And he said, well, maybe it shouldn't. There is some responses. The Forest Service wants to further work with the congressman on this, and I think they agree to do that.
And we are looking at a date of next Monday. We're looking at some details, which you'll see soon, of his visit. You're right, I can't remember any time a congressman came to present to the board, so I appreciate him taking the time out to get our questions answered. Details to follow on that special meeting. All right.
I would hope that we have maybe a bigger venue, and I don't know, maybe like 10 people show up, but bigger venue and maybe a little better time than I'm on. I'm sure his...
His time is really, yeah, so that's what we're working at. Okay, retail cannabis.
Oh, there's been a new developments.
Okay.
I have a question on that. Margaret, have you been working on drafting the ordinance for the retail cannabis ad hoc?
At this point, I haven't been insulted yet. I assume at some point I will, but it hasn't come to my desk.
I believe it's the staff that planned, staff that planned it.
Oh, staff.
Just looking at...
The draft.
Of concepts, you're not in the ordinance writing stage yet.
I don't think there's a formal interest.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a five-minute break before we go into our 10 o'clock public hearing. Moving on to county matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order.
Are we going to do it 10 o'clock first?
Oh, thank you. We already took care of her.
Yeah, right.
We're trying to get her. Moving back to the public hearing at 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution authorizing two community development block grant programs, CDBG, income waivers as eligible projects under the CDBG reuse plan and low moderate income area requirements. No impact to general fund. My apologies, Susie.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good morning. Susie Cockums, county grants coordinator. Last month, we brought in front of you a different resolution to approve the community development block grant or CDBG reuse plan. That plan governs how we spend program income, and program income is derived from payments from past loans that we have made to individuals, families, or business entities. And those repayments come back to the county in the form of program income. And we are allowed to spend that program income on projects within our community or our county that meet a public benefit for low to moderate income families, individuals, areas, clientele. So today, we have in front of you a resolution and two program income waiver requests for projects that have been identified by the state in working with me as meeting that low to moderate income benefit, and they are public facility project waivers. So we have two. One is for the fairgrounds in Hayford, and that project will be to replace all of the existing lighting that is antiquated and outdated, old fixtures and lighting, upgrading to all LED lighting. Project scope is pretty intensive. The cost is around $285,000. The project is not leveraged. There is no other funding other than the CDBG program income funds for that project. The second project is at the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department, and that project is a fire apparatus structure. It is highly leveraged. There are, I believe, four other funding sources for that, and the state really looks at leveraged projects as like a bonus, you know? So that project, the cost is about $500,000. Program income funds are going to cover about $111,000 of that. Very positive input from the state that both of these waivers will be approved. It's been processed. We've been working on it for several months now. So we're to the point where we've got the reuse plan updated. Now the waiver request will go into the state. If they are both approved, then we will, there's some other overlays that have to happen, and then the projects will take place, at which time, when those projects are completed, we can then submit two more waivers. So I will be holding a community infrastructure planning meeting in late August, early September, to start planning the next round of waivers that we would take to state.
Can I answer my question? Supervisor Brad?
Once these projects are completed, there is no additional maintenance for, by the county, by you, by our grants department? Is that correct?
No, no, I will have to do annual reports, but we already have to do those without waivers, so...
Okay, now, are we able to pay for those annual reports? Data would come out of general fund, I assume?
No, that we can charge the program income waiver funds for what they call general admin, it's 17%.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Concurrent is typically not up to cover the entire cost. There's usually...
It'll be like a hospital, so you'd be right.
We monitor it very closely and request general fund contribution to keep us updated, to keep us from going into a deficit.
We're not getting burned again?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Susie on these projects? If I understood you correctly, there's potential for more projects coming forward after you go through your process.
Yeah, so earlier this year, we held a series of public meetings where we invited the community and stakeholders to participate in planning how we would spend some of these funds. And so, believe me, there were a plethora of needs from the community that were presented. Unfortunately, because of the low to moderate income benefit that has to be had, we reveal as a town itself, it does not qualify. If you look at the county as a whole right now, we have to be at what they call 51% of our population to be low and moderate income for the whole county to qualify, and we're only at 42%. So what I had to do with the state is drill down to pretty much specific census tract blocks, groups, neighborhoods... blocks, groups, neighborhoods, sectors that would qualify and so we're targeting right now projects from those sectors that would automatically qualify. So it's going to make it, I don't want to say streamlined, but a faster process, so.
All right, thank you. Comments, questions from the public? No? Okay, we're back to the board. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve, three point one is presented.
Second.
All right. Dave Bowlin? Yes, you're right. Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Evans?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. On to county matters now. These items include non-routine controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request an item be heard out of order. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item five point one. Acknowledge receipt of and assign, and assign supervisors to draft responses to the following twenty eighteen nineteen grand jury reports, cannabis ordinance development and complaint, complaint process and Trinity County road maintenance issues. Wait through my computer to get there. Susie, did you have something to offer or no? Uh, okay, the next one, you did, okay. All right, um, so we have two, um, Supervisor Brown, this is something that we typically almost do every year, respond back to grand jury reports on a variety of issues they felt they needed to look into. So, uh, as you can see at the next item, Supervisor Finley picked one up last time and his response is, uh, we will address next, next item. So, uh, I'm happy to do the cannabis ordinance development and complaint process report. There's a few things that have certainly were left out that I think need to be included. And, um, ah, sorry. And then anyone wanting to do road maintenance?
I was thinking, John seems to have a lot of, uh?
Oh.
I'll be more than happy to take care of that one. Um, you, you read the first one, correct about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
You want to work with me on it?
No.
Okay.
I've been volunteered for road, I'll do it.
Okay.
If you don't want to, it's just you always seem to have a road.
That's because other, just because you're taking care of it.
Oh. Well, I think that SB one must not, money should be held those come your way. It hasn't already.
It's just those two potholes.
That's it?
They're getting deeper and deeper and deeper here. I'll take, I'll take Richard down there one day and we'll, we'll tell them where they are, let him prove his suspension on them.
Just throw some AC in the back of Richard's truck and go down there.
I already, I already offered that myself to pay for that, but I don't want to get sued too badly when I can for working on the county roads.
All right, so we don't need a motion on this, we just accepted, okay. All right, any other, uh, comments from the public on these two? Seeing none, they've been assigned to Supervisor Finley and myself. Five point two, approve the board's response to grand jury report twenty eighteen nineteen, the vote by mail process.
Need more talk of this lacking in what your board's response to this grand jury report, like I thought I'd do this, and I also put some comments on the board.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to take a quick moment. Did you have a moment to?
Oh, I've never seen that one before, yeah.
Oh, that's right, you would.
I thought it was in the packet. So, so it might have been. It wasn't the packet.
It was?
Oh, well, the one I read was in the packet.
Okay, in case you need to take a quick moment to review. All right, questions from the board before I open up to the public? Okay, anyone else would like to comment? All right, bring it back to the board for approval.
This is your chance. What did I prepare for?
All right.
My, uh, my motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Did you have comments? Did I finish that? All right, all right. Don't miss anything?
Am I supposed to say aye or nay?
Yes. If you approve, aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you Supervisor Brown.
My question.
Five point three, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section two point six zero point four one zero A, authorize hiring a program manager one, candidate number ten forty-five four four three six, at range M two three zero, step E in the Health and Human Services Department, eligibility and employment services unit effective of August first, twenty nineteen, approximate costs and salary and benefits per month for a program manager one at A step is eighty-three hundred nineteen dollars and at E step is nine thousand nine hundred nine dollars. Okay.
Shelly said, Director of Health and Services. Uh, Shelly is out today, so she asked to have a draft document signed for her. Um, so on behalf of the NHS, we have hired a vacancy at, in our program manager position since April and, um, we had a very successful, uh, result in applicants very qualified, individual that totally exceeded our expectations. Um, he has fifteen years of experience in working specifically with those two programs and, uh, he comes highly recommended from a small county, which we embrace because having that small county experience is, is really important. Um, so with that, we really would appreciate your approval of hiring that new staff. So, and I'm here for any questions.
None from the board? Questions, comments from the public?
Where am I?
Right. Well, congratulations on success. Well, we haven't proved it yet, but.
Motion to approve five point three.
Congrats on the success interview I did.
I can hop up and please?
Yeah. I'll give a motion.
Yes, motion to approve five point three.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so, thank you. All right, moving on to, well, I'm going to read the item, but, uh, we don't have the time to spare before a twelve o'clock closed session. The item for at noon is six point one, Government Code Section five four nine five four point five, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation number of cases one, Trinity Action Association, Inc. versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court cases number nineteen C, B zero zero one. All right, so. We will.
So the reason was personnel, maybe, I think?
Uh, dear. Any comments on this closed session item? All right. Thank you. We will, we semi by phone. In an hour, so is that sad, huh? Okay, you're recording. Okay, uh, the meeting, um, closed session, uh, will be continued till August sixth. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.